Greetings and welcome to the studios of the Community Media Center. I'm Richard Turner, and I'm honored to serve as the Executive Director. Thanks for joining us whether viewing at home, on our local cable channels, viewing online, or being here live in person. Connecting you with the current and topical issues before our community is a critical part of our mission. The Community Media Center provides Carroll County residents and organizations with services, tools, training, and access to innovative digital technologies that engage, inform, and connect them to their community. It gives me great pleasure now to introduce the Honorable Charles Harrison. He's a former Orphans Court Judge. He served in Vietnam as an Army Captain and Armed Helicopter Pilot, having been awarded various medals, including the Bronze Star. He served 28 years in the FBI as a Supervisory Special Agent, FBI Assistant Inspector, and Unit Chief. He is the founder of Harrison and Associates LLC, an investigative and security consulting company. His other community service includes the County Ethics Commission and National Association of Retired Federal Employees. And tonight, he's here in his official capacity as our Chairman of the Community Media Center Board of Directors. Charles?
Thank you, Richard. Good evening, and welcome to the Board of Education Canada's Forum. I'm Charles Harrison, Chair of the Community Media Center Board of Directors. Tonight's forum is being held at the Community Media Center Studios in Westminster. The program is being streamed live on Cable Channels 19 and 23, as well as on the Community Media Center website at carrollcommunitycenter.org. The program will be rebroadcast on Cable Channels 19 and 23, starting Monday, September 7th. The Community Media Center has partnered with the Carroll County Times to provide this programming as a public service to the community. Our goal is to establish an equal platform for political advocacy and provide local residents with information about individuals seeking public office in the upcoming general election. At this time, I will turn the program over to our moderator for the evening, Mr. Wayne Carter, editor of the Carroll County Times, to explain the rules and open tonight's forum. Mr. Carter?
All right, thank you, Charles. All right, so as moderator for this evening, I'll first start by introducing each one of the candidates. Each candidate will then have two minutes for an opening statement. Following the forum introductions, I will ask the first question, and each candidate will have two minutes to answer that question. All candidates will answer the identical question. Just a reminder, there will be no debate, this is an informational forum. At the conclusion of the question and answer period, each candidate will have two minutes to provide a summary statement. All responses will be timed, and the timekeeper will give candidates a hand signal when 30 seconds remains. The timekeeper will ring the bell two or three seconds after the final stop signal is given, and the moderator may immediately interrupt the candidate and discontinue the statement or answer at that time. The questions will be a mixture of pre-prepared questions, those submitted in advance by the public via email, and from tonight's live audience. Tonight's forum is being recorded, so we ask that everyone please turn off their cellphones or put them on silent. And we also ask that attendees please refrain from applause, or making noise during the forum, or doing anything visible or audible to express support or opposition to any candidate during the forum. Now, before we begin, candidate Tyra Bataglia was unable to join us this evening due to a previous commitment, but we do encourage our audience to visit the Community Media Center's online voters guide at carrollmediacenter.org to watch video profiles from all of the candidates running for Board of Education. And with that, let us begin, and we'll start with Dr. Patricia Ann Dorsey, who will give us her opening statement.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dr. Patricia Dorsey, and it is my privilege to participate in the forum this evening. Many thanks to the Community Media Center and Carroll County Times for sponsoring tonight's forum. Thanks also to our moderator, timekeeper, my fellow candidates, and to our audience for attending tonight's forum. Our school system faces initiatives requiring careful review and action. To name a few initiatives, we must oversee and meet the requirements for implementing provisions of the Safe to Learn Act. We must decide how to move forward with recommendations from the Redistricting and School Closure Committee, negotiate with bargaining groups to enhance competitive salaries for our CCPS staff, establish clear performance targets for the areas of focus in our strategic plan, and certainly ensure that our students are learning. I believe that I possess the skills and knowledge needed to help address these challenges. Building on my experiences as a former Carroll County Classroom Teacher, Resource Teacher, Assistant Principal and Principal, and my preparedness of having studied education policy, planning, and administration, I have gained additional insight about Carroll County Public Schools by attending our meetings and work sessions of the board, visiting schools and departments, meeting with administrators, and having dialogue about the status of our school system. My top priorities as a candidate are to enhance the safety and security of all students and staff, to ensure that our salaries are competitive, to support programs that meet the needs of our students, and to recruit and retain quality teachers and staff to enhance a diverse workforce. I look forward to discussing these issues and additional ones as we share information this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Doug Howard?
Well, good evening. My name is Doug Howard, and I'm a candidate for the Board of Education. I want to thank the Carroll County Times, CMC, and my fellow candidates for being here tonight. For the past eight years, it has been my pleasure to serve as County Commissioner, and for four, as President of the Board of Commissioners. Funding for Carroll County Schools was $162 million a year when I came into office, and it was $192 million this year. During my tenure, I advocated for school funding, school safety, Mount Airy Middle School to be built, money for technology, science classrooms, the Career and Tech Center, and a Combined Education Committee to bring the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education together with delegates to solve school funding issues. I strongly support education because of the success of my children in Carroll County Schools and the impact it has on our community. Now, we have very good schools, but we need change on the Board of Education. I'm sure each candidate tonight will share the reasons with you why they should get your vote, and there are some very compelling reasons for some of the folks up here to ask for your vote. I want to share some reasons why you might not want to vote for Doug Howard. If you like decisions made behind closed doors, I'm not your guy. If you want five to nothing votes with little dissenting discussion, I'm not the choice. If you want curriculum to continually change as test scores do, and as the tests themselves change, again, not your guy. If you want a system where we can't raise teacher pay without raising everybody's pay, then again, I'm probably not your choice. And if you want Board of Ed members that are hand-selected by the very union that's going to negotiate with them for pay, again, I'm clearly not your guy, and the union will tell you that as well. If you want a different approach, making the classroom the priority, fighting for teacher pay, developing plans and budgets that are aggressive yet realistic, publicly debating all and discussing all issues, and strongly advocating for your schools, I might be your candidate and might be worthy of one of your three votes. And I ask you to consider that tonight and when you go to the polls on November 6th. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Ken Kyler?
I want to thank the Carroll County Times, the Community Media Center, the moderator, the audience, and those watching this for giving their time for this forum. My name is Kenny Kyler, I live with my wife Rhonda in Manchester. I have a BA in Mathematics from Washington College, completed all requirements for teacher certification. I joined the Maryland Army National Guard in 1972, graduated from Officer Candidate School, and completed the Officer Basic Course in Oklahoma. Over one-half of our taxes go to the school system. We need fiscal responsibility and transparency. By managing the school system's properties wisely, we can budget to continue to attract highly qualified teachers and staff. I have worked all of my life in construction. At both CJ Miller and Stewart and Tate, I've been active in budgeting, finance, estimating, contract negotiation, project management, hiring, managing employees, and more. In 1973, I founded Manchester Wrestling. I was a Board Member and Treasury Associate Utility Contractors of Maryland. Through that organization, I was active in lobbying and contacting government groups. I also served as President of North Carroll Rec Council and the Maryland Junior Wrestling League. I was a member of the Carroll County Parks and Recreation Board for several years, and served one year as Chairperson. This is my first time running for office. I did very well at the five polling places where I grew up and people knew me best. I need to transition that success to other areas of the county. I learned a lot through the process from students, teachers, administrators, and parents. The more I see just reinforces that I would value the opportunity to serve you on the school board. I want to thank all those who voted in the primary in June to help me get this far. I very much want to serve the students, teachers, staff, and voters of Carroll County. I need your votes with absentee ballots, early voting, and on November 6th to get there. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mary Kowalski?
Yes, hi, thank you. My name is Mary Kowalski, and I'd like to thank the sponsors of this debate. I have, just to tell you a little bit about myself, I have a Master's Degree in Education. Let's see here. And I'm the parent of a recent Carroll County Public Schools graduate. I have 12 years of experience reviewing and analyzing government budgets, beginning with when I began as Co-Chair of Carroll Joint Neighborhood Association in 2006. I'm running for Board of Ed because I really believe we need fresh leadership and new ideas on our Board of Ed. Unless we get fresh leadership in the elected Board of Ed positions, I'm afraid we're going to continue to see fiscal problems, and we're going to continue to see a left-wing radical liberal agenda continue to grow in our local school system, in the curriculum, and in the school environment as well. I want to bring fresh, common sense ideas to the table to get our budget in order, and I want to keep the focus on academic excellence, not political agendas like global warming or gender identity. Our Board of Ed is headed in the wrong direction. Our county taxpayers, our county government is paying $10 million approximately a year to pay off debt on poor fiscal decisions regarding construction. Over $3 million in interest alone per year. More new construction and more modernizations are being planned. After just closing three schools for declining enrollment, this will sink us deeper into debt, financial debt. We need to maintain and utilize the space we have and not take on more debt. You know, they say, "When you're in a hole, stop digging." I think that's good common sense, and that's the kind of common sense I want to bring to the Board of Ed. Thank you.
Okay. And finally, Mr. Bob Lord?
Hello, my name is Bob Lord, and I'd like to thank the Community Media Center and the Carroll County Times for hosting this event. I'd also like to thank all the other candidates' willingness to run for this office. I'm currently the President of the Carroll County Board of Education. Before being elected in 2014, I've been involved with the school system for many years. I've been a classroom volunteer, an active PTA member, and served on various Carroll County Public School Committees. I also co-founded a grassroots advocacy organization called Carroll Values Education. I'm a Girl Scout volunteer, a graduate from the inaugural Carroll County Citizens Police Academy, and a longtime Carroll County resident with two children attending Carroll County Public Schools. It has been a busy first term. I've worked very hard despite many challenges to improve the environment that allows our students to excel. And thanks to the involvement of the families and community, our students continue to outperform their peers across the state. We have a higher graduation rate than any other county in this state. My proudest accomplishment so far are budgets that fund negotiated agreements every year that I've been in office. Our school system is successful because of our great educators, and we must continue to do what it takes to attract and retain them. I take my responsibility for student safety very seriously. We've implemented the Student Data Privacy Policy to protect our students' information online, and I must say, we are the first county to do so. We've reviewed and updated all board policies for student and staff equity and diversity, and we support the implementation of the Safe to Learn Act to make safety a top priority. Finally, I'm proud of the improved relationships between our state delegation, and I've made several trips to Annapolis to support and testify on education. I'm looking forward to tonight's forum. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll start with our first question. We'll start at the head of the table. We'll start with Dr. Patricia Dorsey for our first question. Just last night, the Redistricting and School Closure Committee gave its recommendations to the Board of Education. Much of those recommendations focused on improvements to East Middle School. What are your thoughts on the recommendations presented by the Redistricting Committee, and if elected, what suggestions would you have for moving forward?
Very timely question. Again, it was very interesting to receive the report from the Redistricting and School Closure Committee. Again, I think they've done a very thorough job, and I really appreciate what they were able to do. I certainly agree with their findings. We find ourselves at a point where, when we look at our facilities in the county, East Middle certainly rises to the top as far as needing some attention. So, again, we will have to make sure that we're moving forward with one of the recommendations as far as updating East Middle School. I also found it very interesting, and I agree with the finding, that at this point there certainly is no need warranted for closing additional schools or for full redistricting for our students. So, again, I think the committee did a great job in being so thorough in their findings. And, again, I certainly agree with the basic findings, and I too would want to move forward with taking care of East Middle School. Anyone who has spent any time just visiting that campus at a moment's notice, you can see that things certainly need to be improved. It's not ADA compliant, for number one. And, again, when you can walk through that school and find stadium seats from the 1930s, again, you know the building needs to certainly be updated. So, again, I received the report certainly with the intent that it was given, and I certainly agree with the findings, and know we need to move forward with their recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Howard?
Well, I must say, I actually don't agree with the findings of the committee, although I want to thank the committee for the work that they did. The people that were on it were stellar. They put in a great effort together, and if you get a chance to look at the report, it's one of the best reports I've seen in eight years of public office in terms of its detail, ease of read, you know, easy to read, and some very good information. The problem started out very early on, though, and this is one of the problems indicative of the Board of Education. Clear direction needed to be given to that committee. I've been in this situation as a Commissioner as well. If you get citizens together, or any group together, and send them off with an effort but with not a clear understanding of what the mission is, you likely get back what we got back last night, which was, we did not have a clear path to implement the recommendations that were made. They weren't based in financial reality, and they weren't prioritized along the things that really are the most important thing. The simple fact is, we can't put $80 million into East Middle High School, I mean, East Middle School. We can't put $44 million a year into the capital budget. We've got to make a fundamental decision in Carroll County, what's more important? Is it funding the best teachers in the classroom and the resources like technology and things they're going to need, or are we going to continue on this fixation with buildings and the inability to make the difficult choices to say, certainly at the elementary, maybe at the middle school, we may have to move the lines? Our growth areas are already overwhelmed in the areas where we have schools that are full, and, again, we're going to have that problem because those are the areas that are going to continue to grow. The Board of Education needs to step up, and the nice thing is, they did keep the committee around and say, within the realities of what you can see in the capital budget, even if we can stretch it a bit, what are the things that we can do? How would you prioritize it? And how can you reconfigure our hard assets, our buildings, and those kinds of things to free up revenue to pay for the most important thing, which is teachers? People that will tell you you can have both just aren't telling you the truth.
Okay. Mr. Kyler?
Dr. Lever, the support staff from Central Office and the committee, I think did a great job considering what they were given. I'm glad to see that the Board of Ed said last night they would possibly keep the committee intact and let them do more work. I think they were giving limited guidance, and probably not enough time and not enough information in a timely manner. I sat through three or four of the meetings, I did the tour of East Middle, and I felt like they didn't have enough financial information to actually evaluate the financial part of the decision. I think, again, East Middle should have been closed before this and needs to be closed. May be replaced, but we need to look at debt service. Where is the money coming from? And it's fine to say, well, the state will fund 40% of it. Can we really afford the debt service for the other things going on in the county, the things we need to do at Career Tech, and K-8? I'm not sure we can. I desperately think we need to look at redistricting. We are so afraid of it, and we keep kicking the can down the road. Even at the high school level, we have Francis Guy Key undersized, we have South Carroll headed that direction. Contrary to statistics, and I said earlier, I have a BA in math, I'll give you statistics, Mann Valley is too full. It's dysfunctional. We have a new principal there that we hope's going to do a great job and turn it around. I hope he does. The poor senior class there is on their fifth principal in four years. I don't even know how you defend that happening. We need to look at, yes, we've made a few mistakes, and yes, we need to correct them, and we need to move forward. I think with the right logic on how we manage our buildings, we can continue to attract quality teachers and staff. I think we've got a great system, we just can't let it fall apart. We need to admit some of the many mistakes we've made in the past and correct them and not repeat them.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kowalski?
Yes, thank you. Could you repeat the question?
Sure. The Redistricting and School Closure Committee gave its recommendations to the Board of Education on Wednesday night, much of which focused on improvements to East Middle School. What are your thoughts on the committee's recommendations, and if elected, what suggestions would you have for moving forward?
Okay, thank you. Yes, I agree that we don't need more closing of additional schools or redistricting at this time. The East Middle School issue, yes, it needs attention, and you know what? It's needed attention for a long time. I actually, in prep for this debate, I, you know, I spoke to an official at the Central Office today, and he confirmed what, pretty much what I've been hearing from years of attending Board of Ed meetings. There's a roof that needs to be replaced. It hasn't been replaced. And what he said was, in the 90s, they put single-ply roofs on the schools, and what happened was, they only ended up lasting about 15 to 20 years. So, that roof needs to be replaced, and something like that, a basic repair, if you don't do it, you can end up with worse problems. You can end up with water issues. You can end up with greater structural problems. So, that needs to be put on the front burner. The HVAC system, I understand it's perhaps the oldest HVAC system in our schools in Carroll County, if not the oldest, very close to it, going back to the 1970s. And what the County Board of Ed official told me was that if the chiller, here, I jotted down some notes when I was talking to him, he said, "If the chiller fails, there will be no air conditioning." Not because the building's old, but because the maintenance has not been done. So, there, you know, there are issues that need to be done on buildings, old buildings or new buildings. If you don't maintain them, you're going to have problems. And my thing is, let's get the roof done, let's get the HVAC done, if there's anything else needs to be done, let's get it done. We cannot afford to use EMS, East Middle, as a justification to plunge ourselves tens of millions into building a new K-8 school. We've got to dig out of this debt hole we're in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lord?
So, thank you for the question. So, Dr. Lever is probably one of the leading experts on school building construction and funding in this state. You know, he's a phenomenal person. I thought the report was very detailed, very well-written in plain English, with lots of financial numbers that point out all those things. Now, the board is still digesting everything. We're looking through the recommendations. We will be listening to community feedback. We will be taking all those things into consideration before the Superintendent finally makes his recommendation. What that will be, I can't tell you. What my thoughts are, is that East Middle, you know, is that white elephant in the room. It needs to be addressed. If it is not, it's going to end up just like Charles Carroll, that we've asked funding for for 15 years that we didn't receive, we ended up having to close it because it was beginning to fail. We can do systemic renovations on that building to keep it going, but we don't know for how long. So, what we plan to implement is probably something I'll be voting on before I leave office, but we don't know exactly what that'll be. I'm still digesting everything. I will say, you know, again, that is an incredible report, this committee did a phenomenal job, and I just want to point out that over the last years, even before I was a Board Member, we've had a consultant come out, tell us the same thing. We've had our own internal committee put together, they came up with the same solution, the same thing, and now this committee. So, it kind of tells you, what is the answer? We need to do something about East Middle. Thank you.
Okay. All right, for this next question, we'll start with Mr. Howard. The Park scores, standardized testing scores recently came out, Carroll County remains one of the best in the state. What is your key takeaway when looking at those scores through the eyes of a potential future Board of Education member?
Well, first of all, all of our test scores and all of the rankings that are done for Carroll County in relation to the state demonstrate what a tremendous job our teachers do and what an effective school system we have. It was mentioned earlier that, you know, we want to be better than the other, you know, jurisdictions, or above the state average, or those kinds of things. I think we want to be the very best in the state. I'm not a big fan of standardized testing any more than it needs to be because I think it gives you one piece of the picture. Dr. Lockard agreed with that last night. And I'm a little concerned that every time the test change, or every time the questions on the test change, we take good, long-term, well-trained teachers and say, "Stop teaching history the way you did. Don't teach Brit Lit that way, even though Shakespeare hasn't written any new plays," or, you know, "We're going to change the way you teach chemistry, even though the periodic table hasn't changed either, but we need to do better on these test scores." The obsession with the test scores causes us to be in the continual mode of changing curriculum. It's extraordinarily expensive, it requires us to keep a lot more senior and supervisory staff than is needed, and it doesn't produce better education. We were less focused on test scores 10, 15 years ago. My two oldest children went through the Carroll County School System about 15 years ago, my youngest two are there now. This obsession with test scores has only taken more time away from the teacher, more time out of the classroom. I had a teacher tell me that they stopped teaching new content at the end of March because they had to get ready for testing, test prep, taking the test, and the reality is, we need more time teaching, we need more flexibility for the teacher. So, I think we can look at them, the general direction is interesting, it ought to be one of the things that we consider, but we've got to move away from this obsession. And the funny thing is, after changing all of our curriculum to meet the Park Test, the state's abandoned that test, and they're going to come out with a new test. So, guess what we're going to do? We're going to change our curriculum again to meet the new test. I'd rather we just let our teachers teach.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kyler?
Park and other standardized tests are all necessary evils. We need them to some extent, but what do they really provide accurate measures of? Student performance? They show you statistic and, again, quantitative, structured, objective things, but they don't really measure student progress, proficiency over time. I think the testing has grown to the point now that it's taking too much time and too much resources. One of the biggest, most common complaints I heard from teachers about the testing is when testing's going on, all their computers are being used for testing, they don't have them for the classroom. We can't starve our teaching while we're testing. Again, I don't think they measure social skills and other traits that are very important in how successful a child's going to be. We do need testing, and it's a shame, I think they're going to scale back on it, but there was very good statistics at yesterday's board meeting on how we've done, comparing how we've done, but next year's going to be the last year able to do that because they are going to change all the testing process. Maybe some of that needs to recycle, but I think if you don't watch it, just like government, just like the state highway, you start to get changed for change's sake instead of change that's really needed. Again, I think we need to focus on the classroom and the teaching. The testing's a good tool, but it's not the only tool, and it's not the most valuable tool. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Kowalski?
Thank you for the question. You know, with the Park testing, I just, I'm tempted, and maybe I shouldn't say this, but it's like government. It's like, really, seriously. So, we spent millions of dollars in Carroll County in order to implement the Park So, we spent millions of dollars in Carroll County in order to implement the PARC test back in, what, 2014, I think is when it was first piloted. We had to buy many, many computers for our schools. We had to hire computer technicians. We had to adapt each of our schools so that they were able to handle the technology. I mean, a lot of money went into the PARC testing prep. And it was really, it was, you know, as a citizen and as a school system employee, it was so much propaganda about how wonderful it was going to be. Well, lo and behold, here we are, four years later, and we're finding out that it didn't turn out to be what it was built up to be. And so now, you know, we have to adjust and I hope that it's not going to be a large expenditure. I'm not expecting it to be when we do have to adjust. But the PARC testing came in conjunction with the Common Core state standards. And I think the public had the gut instinct right, that this isn't what it's being cracked up to be and promoted to be. And even when you look at the PARC testing, which was an Obama initiative, the race to the top, you had the Common Core curriculum component, you had the PARC testing component as well as another component. And even when you look at the PARC testing, it doesn't give you detailed, enough detailed information about the student's academic achievement. You're rated on a score from one to five. And, you know, as a parent, as a person in the education field, I'd like to see a little more detailed information about student achievement. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lord.
So, our PARC scores were phenomenal. I mean, it shows that there are changes that are made and our, you know, we give credit to our teachers, our educators for making those changes to bring up our PARC scores. But with that said, I'm not a big fan of PARC at all. It was something that was mandated from the state and continues to be mandated from the state, and it really doesn't test the individual student. It tests the system. I'm a bigger fan of some of the local assessments that teachers implement so that they can actually see how that child is doing. You know, it is, that is the most beneficial. I would like to see a reduction in the statewide assessment, to take less time and give our educators more time to teach. You know, I completely support that. But unfortunately, we do have this in place and is state mandated. It's something that we must do and it does take a lot of time. And our hands are tied as a Board of Ed locally because our legislative did this to us. Thank you very much.
Okay. And Dr. Dorsey.
A key takeaway from the PARC scores is certainly that our students have performed very well. And again, I think that's a tribute to certainly the instruction that's going on in our classrooms and I certainly applaud the teachers and staff members for having our children be successful on the test. And I have to add that I think, at times, testing, I think, is misunderstood. We have testing at different levels. We have testing and we get different information from the different levels. For example, we certainly have tests that are done at the national level, at the state level, the local level, and then the individual level. And each piece gives us a different piece of information. So again, we need to keep in mind that we want to know how our students are performing. How are they stacking up with other students in the nation? And for that, we look at the national assessments such as we get through the NAEP program. And with our state testing, again, we want to know how our students are performing compared to other systems in the state. And that's the piece of information that we can get from PARC. And then again, our local level, we have our county benchmarks that give a different piece of data concerning how our students are performing with the curriculum that we have in place in our county. And then again, we have the individual testing. So again, effective teachers, I think, really want to know how well their students are performing at the various levels. I think we've sort of gotten off track when we have too much testing. I certainly am not an advocate for over-testing, but I certainly like to look at the different data pieces as far as sharing different information. It gives us a better view of how our teaching is being received by our students and how they're performing. And again, the tests are just one piece of data that we receive.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Dorsey. All right, for this next question, we're going to start with Mr. Kyler. Do you believe that increasing diversity among the CCPS workforce is important? And if so, if elected, how would you work to do so?
I think the improving diversity in Carroll County Public School workforce is very important. Adding qualified teachers of color to any school system has to be a plus. It's interesting that in Carroll County, the workforce, which I think they work very hard to add diversity, doesn't keep up with even the student population or the county diversity. In construction, I've seen a lot of quotas and goals. They don't work. I think, our central office now, I think, is working hard to do this. Maybe we need to partnership with some traditional minority colleges, but the second step, I think, is even harder. I think we've been somewhat successful in attracting some teachers of color, but we have trouble retaining them. Now, I don't know that I think that's a community issue. I think it's maybe travel, maybe environment, maybe where people grew up. I'd like to see us maybe find more homegrown minority teachers who would be more willing to stay here. It's a tough situation. We need the diversity. We joke about it. I think my family tree's more diverse than all of Carroll County. And it's healthy, it's wonderful, I love it. But we didn't get there by setting quotas. We didn't tell our children who they had to pick for a partner. But it worked and it was successful. Somehow, we need to work that out with the school system. It's hard. And I think we're trying. I think we're doing well, but it needs to be one of our highest goals to find more diversity in our workforce.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Kowalski.
Yes, thank you for the question and I think it's a, it's a good question. It's an important question. I was at a Board of Ed meeting. I don't, I don't know the exact date, but I'm going to say maybe, maybe one, one and a half years ago. And this issue came up and there was actually a staff report. It was, you know, a staff member at central office that gave, you know, came to the microphone and presented a report on this very issue. And I was very surprised to hear what had come out. What they had said was that they had, I guess, in the past, perhaps years, so they had hired four people of color to work in the school system. And within a relatively short period of time, all four people had quit. And what they cited as the reason was a hostile workforce. And, I don't know, it really surprised me. I don't really know what to make of that. It was, just came as such a surprise. But I think it's important, I think, to address that issue. I think we need to, we need to look into, we need to investigate that. And one of the things that had been said at the meeting was that it appeared that it was the kind of thing where you couldn't prove, like perhaps they were being mistreated in some way at the workforce, but there was no way you could prove that it was happening, which I think is just a tragedy. I know, I know that the school officials at the time said that they were going to send out a letter to the schools, just really reiterating our policy on non-discrimination, on creating a welcome environment. And I'd like to see what else we could do about that because we do have a substantial, I think it's up to maybe seven percent now, of students who are people of color. And they need some role models. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Lord.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. This has been a struggle for our board for a long time. We have devoted staff. We've devoted, you know, financial resources to this. And, you know, it's very important that we do have a diverse workforce. You know, our student population, eighteen percent of our minorities, you know, and our staff does not reflect that. So we feel as a board that this is an extremely important issue, that we do have diversity in our schools. And we've devoted a lot of time and our staff has worked incredibly hard and we've brainstormed to come up with ideas of what we can do to keep these educators working in our system, including exit polls and everything. You know, we have changed all our policies to make sure that this, that there is no discrimination of our workforce within there, you know, and, but, you know, this is something that we will continue to work on. You know, we work with the NAACP to help bring minorities. We do go to, you know, prominently African-American colleges to try to recruit. But, you know, being a county that is primarily Caucasian, it is hard to attract those minorities and it's hard to keep them here. But it's something that we will continuously work on. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Dorsey.
The question, whether increasing diversity is important, certainly can be answered by emphatically saying, yes, it's very, very important. Even if we just have one or two students in any setting, it's very important that they have a role model who looks like them. And I can just remember being in a classroom before, in a first grade classroom, just walking through, observing one day, and there was a reading group and this little girl sitting at her reading group table got very excited when the teacher told them to turn to the next page in their story. Because when she turned the page, she said, oh, there's somebody who looks like me, look, she's like me. And again, I knew it was, I always knew it was important, but to hear and to see that one student's reaction was just very, very telling for me and again, really helped to emphasize the importance of, yes, making sure that we do have a diverse workforce. The question, how will we improve this? Again, we have worked hard as a system over the years to increase diversity. I can remember back in the seventies, being a part of a workforce or a task force that worked with our human resources department on different strategies to use. We visited historically black colleges and universities. We made sure that we were invited to the job fairs there. We also were in touch with some of those universities to see if their student teachers could be a part of student teaching in our system. So we've done things certainly over the years, not saying that we have done it all and not saying that we need to stop. We certainly need to pick up the pace. I'm very encouraged knowing that there is a Department of Equity and the hard work that those folks are doing to make sure that we increase minority and diversity. Their work is very, very important, so we need to continue that. And we need to make sure that our county is certainly appealing to all of our applicants.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Howard.
So, when I look at some of the questions that will be asked and some of the things that come before the Board of Education, I think the filter that we should look at everything from is, as it relates to the Board of Education, is, does it help our education system? Does it help us be more effective in the classroom or not? I think sometimes the Board of Education gets way beyond the scope of what its original mission was, which is to educate. The answer to the question you ask, I would also agree, is absolutely yes. Not only because of the extraordinary importance of role models in the system, but also because there's a broadness of thinking and experience that's so important for any community to have. I've lived lots of other places other than Carroll County and they were incredibly more diverse than we are here. And I think that, you know, there's so much you learn and so much more that a community's enriched when diversity is embraced. I also think it's very hard to force certain outcomes. Those programs tend to not yield the results that they want. So one of the things that has to happen is, first of all, Carroll County needs to make sure that both in the classroom, in the school system and in the community as a whole, that we're an inviting community to everyone that wants to come here, no matter their race or their religion or any other factor. On top of that, I think we need to recognize that we have an asset in the McDaniel College within our community is probably the most diverse couple miles of territory that we have. And I know the president of that college has long wanted to enhance the relationship that they have with the community, encourage more people to stay in our community and be embraced there. And so I think that's something that we can reach out and do and I would make an effort to do that. I also think we need to be careful that as we pursue these goals, we don't inadvertently paint a picture that causes more people to have concerns about coming here than they might otherwise have. But more than anything, a strong Board of Education has to send a very clear message that everyone is welcome and I believe if we do that effectively, the population of teachers will reflect the population as a whole.
Okay. Thank you. All right, for this next question, we'll start with Ms. Kowalski and this question submitted from our audience. What is your perspective of the teachers' union, both at the local level and at the state level?
Okay. Thank you for the question. My perspective of the teachers' union, well, I think it's, I think it's something we need, you know, because how does the Board of Ed negotiate with, you know, how many employees we have? Hundreds, thousands? It's kind of, you know, an efficient way of communicating back and forth with a very large, I think Carroll County Public Schools is the largest employer in Carroll County. So, you know, you need that, that point of reference, that individual, that president of the union groups to be able to communicate the concerns of the union back and forth to the Board of Ed. And they hold their meetings and they communicate through their channels to their board, to their president. And then that message is brought forward to the Board of Ed members. So, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a necessity and I don't have any real strong feelings one way or the other. I'm trying to look at my time to see how much, I'm doing pretty good on this one. You know, any animosity, I know sometimes you'll hear in the community, you know, people might, well, there's a lot of, you know, different ideas, different opinions and about unions and that kind of thing. But I think, I think at the local level, it's something we need. What concerns me, what really concerns me is our issue of, and I feel for the teachers on this issue, of losing teachers. We've lost so many dozens and dozens of top-quality teachers because our pay was frozen for seven years. And again, this comes back to a budget issue. I mean, I mean, we're in a hole. We're paying three million a year in interest. We've got to stop that, stop these new construction ideas and we've got to look out for our teachers. They're looking out for us and our kids. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lord.
So, how do I feel about the associations that represent our bargaining groups? You know, it is, they're essential. You know, the Teachers Association, CCEA, they represent the teachers that belong to their union, but they also represent the teachers that don't. And they negotiate on their behalf, you know? Also, you know, it's an integral part that, you know, they represent those educators that, when there is a grievance that's filed. So they play an essential role. And I don't see how it would work without them. Would every teacher be negotiating on their own behalf? There has to be some organization so that the fact that they negotiate on behalf of their members as well as every other teacher that is not a member, you know, is important. There needs to be a group. But there are five bargaining groups. You know, there's a bargaining group for clerical workers. There's a bargaining group, you know, and assistants. There's a bargaining group for our custodians, you know, the workforce within the buildings that keep the buildings running. There's our food service workers. So there needs to be an organization that will bargain on their behalf and represent them if there is a concern. Those are my feelings on the unions.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Dorsey.
Speaking specifically concerning the teachers' union, my perspective is that certainly the teachers' union is necessary. I think the teachers' union does a fine job in making sure that the working conditions that have been set up for all of the teachers, that they're improved or enhanced and serving the needs of the teachers that are being represented. And as it's been said, they also represent represented. And as it's been said, they also represent teachers who aren't members of their union. So, again, I think they're necessary. I think that the teachers' union does a great job as far as representing the teachers, making sure that the working conditions are appropriate, and also being the voice for negotiations. Because, again, you need a bargaining unit to represent the teachers, to make sure that they are negotiating in good faith with the system to receive equitable salaries. So, again, I think the union is necessary, and I think it's very, very important that we establish positive relationships with our teachers' union. Because, again, they serve a purpose, and we need to respect that purpose and work together for the good of the students.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Howard?
Well, first and foremost, I'd say they're exceptionally poor at picking the right candidates for election. No, just kidding. You know, certainly, you know, if the teachers themselves feel like that the best option is to have that negotiating capability and that bargaining unit, I don't have a problem with that. But, we also need to remember that the Board of Education is the organization that they're bargaining with. So, there are lots of organizations that have 3,000 employees that don't have to have a union. They don't have to have representation. If we're saying as the Board of Ed, they need to have representation to get good working conditions and to get adequate pay, what we're saying as a Board of Education is we're inadequate in giving them good working conditions and adequate pay. So, to me, it's a little bit of an odd situation. I wouldn't want to admit that we're a lousy employer and therefore need to be monitored, negotiated with, or really, you know, in some cases intimidated into doing the right thing. The reality is, we should be able to do that with or without a union. That said, I think union representation is fine. It brings some important issues to light. I think unfortunately, it's important to recognize that, like lots of organizations, the union is a membership organization. So, it's not necessarily about getting the most that they can get for teacher pay because they have to worry about headcount. And the fact that all the unions negotiate together, which means that we can't address the issue of teacher compensation without giving every administrator and every support person comparable increases, says we will never be able to use our resources for the most important thing, which is getting the compensation in the classroom up. So, I have my differences with them. As a Board of Ed member, though, I would certainly work with them. I think it's important to hear people out, whether you agree with them or disagree with them. I was supported by the union when I was a candidate for commissioner, went out, fought, got a lot of funding for education. Then, there were certain things I did that apparently, you know, caused that to come into question. Be that as it may, the most important thing is, as a Board of Ed member, I would want to make sure that working conditions and compensation were good. So, whether the union was there or not, it wasn't ever necessary, but it could be a good addition for the teachers to have.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kyler?
Evaluating and approving teacher salary and staff salary has to be one of the top priorities of Board of Education. I think the teachers' union and the other four bargaining units are an integral part of that process. I think particularly teaching, even though there's numbers, and in construction, we see union and non-union, I'm not sure those unions are as active and proficient as our local teachers' union is. I think they do a valuable job for the teachers, and I think the negotiation is a necessary evil to help maintain quality teachers and quality staff in Carroll County. Again, I think, I think what they do is appropriate. I don't think they should be more involved with the Board of Ed, or more involved with some of the other decisions, but I think they need to represent their members and their non-members. And I think that helps in the negotiations. I think it would be nice and utopia that, that the Board of Ed, one of the, one of the things I'm learning in this process, there are so many things that the Board of Ed does. We look at the big things, closing schools, teachers' pay, whatever, and we get such hard opinions on it. While they're doing that, they're doing a hundred other things. So, it would be nice to think that they would maintain perfect standards for the teachers, and they would maintain fair and equitable pay. But, I think it needs to be the system of checks and balances that the union provides to make that happen. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. For this next question, we'll start with Mr. Lord. And kind of a little bit of carryover from the discussion we were just having, we had a question submitted via email prior to the forum about the disparity between administrative salaries versus teacher salaries. And the question was, if elected, what would you do to address this, if anything?
Well, so I will say, you know, our bargaining units, in their contracts and negotiated agreements, they have a Me Too clause, which is, you know, basically says that one bargaining unit gets something, the other bargaining unit has the opportunity to get it also. But, with that being said, that is also a negotiated item that is in the contract. It's something that can't be easily removed. So, yes, when our focus is teachers, you know, administrators get those raises. But, I have to question, aren't they as deserving, you know, our custodians? They work incredibly hard. Over the years, you know, we've had to cut custodial staff. You know, they're cleaning more square footage with one person. You know, during that time for seven years that educators did not get raises, our administrators didn't get raises. Our custodial staff didn't get raises. Their food service people didn't get raises. Nobody got raises. So, are they less deserving? I mean, the other day in discussion, we had that our technical staff, you know, each staff member, we have ten, you know, we have 20,000 computers in our system. You know, ten computer technicians working on 20,000 computers. The state says that we should have four times as many. You know, it is hard to hire them, but we can't afford to bring anymore in. But, they're given this harder workload. I, you know, I'm not necessarily against, you know, not having that Me Too clause, but again, that's a negotiated agreement. You know, that is something that would have to be negotiated with all the unions. They would have to agree to it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Dorsey?
When I look at the disparity between administrative versus teacher salaries, again, I look at the level of responsibility for the two groups. And I really do feel that we need to have equitable salaries at all levels. And one way that we can take a look at equitable salaries, we can look at our surrounding counties, and we can compare what administrators in our system make versus the administrators in other systems. And we can do the same thing with teachers. And again, we have to be concerned about bringing everyone along to make sure that their salaries are equitable. For example, you know, we have seen that we have lost some teachers to other systems because of better pay, not necessarily better working conditions maybe, but better pay. And the same thing could happen at the administrative and central office level as well. If people were really just looking at salaries, maybe they would consider teaching outside of Carroll County. So, I do think that we need to, to make sure that when we're looking at the salaries for all of our staff members, we need to make sure that our pay in Carroll County is certainly equitable with the salary of the same job performance in surrounding counties. And again, you know, we've looked, at the very beginning, the second question we looked at concerned the park scores. Well, again, we have to acknowledge that our children do well because of the quality of the teachers and the staff members that we have interacting with them. So, again, we need to make sure that we are, making sure that their salaries are equitable with those salaries in the surrounding counties.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Howard?
First and foremost, I believe the Board of Education needs to start looking from a budgeting standpoint and a planning standpoint in the world of reality. Comparing to other jurisdictions is fine when we're talking about recruiting and things that we need to stay within a certain range. But, the problem is, when we get into these discussions about things that are just not financially viable, we end up not making decisions. And to say that we want to bring everybody along is fine, and it sounds good, but what it really means is we're not willing to make the decisions about what things are most mission critical. In any organization, certain things are mission critical. In a hospital, it's a doctor. In the military, it's the soldier in the field. In education, it's the teacher in the classroom. Now, it doesn't take away from all the other things that go to support that, that go to make that, you know, able to be able to do what they do. But, at the end of the day, if the teacher and the student interaction doesn't result in education, what are we doing this for? So, at the end of the day, first and foremost, we need to get that Me Too clause taken out, or we need to at least start from the premise that we're going to get teacher compensation back in line first. If it causes some other groups to have to follow behind, that's going to have to be the way it is. The fact is, we can say we value everybody equally, but we don't pay that custodian the same that we pay a principal anyhow. There is a huge disparity already. So, either we're going to pay everybody the same, or we need to recognize there are different roles in the organization. Well-paid teachers will drive education, that will drive the system. I never want to see an excellent teacher leave the classroom because the next best raise for them is to become an administrator. We have great administrators, and that's a talent in and of itself. But, I want great teachers that are passionate about teaching to have every financial reason to stay in that classroom to the very last day of their employment. That's not the way our system works now, and partly, it's because of the structure that we have with the negotiating agreements, having to do everything together, and not being able to identify what's most mission critical. Anybody not willing to make those decisions is not going to get us where we need to be as a Board of Education.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kyler?
With the last question, I said that I thought the teachers' union and the other four bargaining units were an integral part of negotiations and getting proper conditions and proper pay. And I strongly believe that. I do not feel we should have the Me Too clause. I think each of those units should be able to negotiate independently. And I think we have some issues with teachers' pay. I'm not sure I believe we're losing teachers in great, great numbers for that reason. But, we still need to look at it, and we need to work at it. I think the Board of Ed, as running any business, they need to man up and say, "We're not going to shaft a custodian so we can give the teachers more pay." But, maybe some years, they may say, "Well, we need to get the teachers up a little bit, and central office has to bite the bullet this year." They need to make those tough decisions without a clause requiring that everybody's equal. So, again, I'm a strong believer in negotiating units. I think they do a good job in representing all their people. I think they work together some, and I think that's great. But, I think as far as Board of Ed, they shouldn't be required with a Me Too clause, and they need to man up and make the right decisions on compensating all the staff and employees. And even with the Me Too clause, I think, again, I'm trying to learn, we still have some hourly people, we have some other people in the system that aren't represented by those five units, and sometimes they get the short end of the stick. And again, I don't think Board of Ed should allow that to happen. Nobody in our system, working with our children, should be overlooked regardless of their negotiating unit. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Kowalski?
Yes. Thank you for the question. It's a good one. You're, Mr. Carter, you're throwing us some good questions here tonight, and I appreciate it. And I know the viewers, and the audience does as well. So, the disparity between teacher salaries and administrative salaries, what do I, what do I think about it? I personally, I'd like to see the percentages be uniform. And because, I'm not working in the school system right now, but I have, I do have seventeen years' experience working in the school system in various positions in various schools. And I can tell you that, that when you see, for example, administrative staff at central office who are already, many of them already making very high salaries, and when you see, for example, a proposal to give them an eight percent raise, and it, on the ground, in the school building, it does cause, because people see that. They know that. They get emails, and they stay abreast of that. Their union keeps them abreast of that, if nothing else. And they see that, and it does cause some resentment. It adds to a morale issue. And that's where I'm concerned about the morale of the staff in our schools. We need to keep their morale up. They've got a tough job. It's, it's not easy being a teacher. It's a tough job, and we need to do everything we can to keep their morale up. So, I think, I prefer to see, you know, lead by example. I don't like it. I don't like to see a proposal for a percentage raise higher for administrative than for the teachers and other employees. I say lead by example, especially when we're in really, really tight budgetary times. And we're all, you know, we're all hurting, we're all tightening our belts. I really flinch. I really cringe at that. So, I'd like to see some uniformity there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. For this next question, we'll start with Dr. Dorsey. Earlier this year, the Carroll County Public Schools implemented the Student Resource Officer Program, along with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office. What other ideas do you have that, if elected, you would implement to improve school safety?
Looking at everything that's associated with the Safe to Learn Act at this point, it's hard to think that there could be anything additional to add, because, I mean, it's a very comprehensive law that we have to put in place. I think that it's certainly appropriate with our school resource officers, or if there isn't SROs to make sure that we have adequate coverage by the law enforcement agencies. I think that's great. And again, the way it's lined up, it's to begin in our high schools this year, and to pick up with the middle and elementary schools starting next year. So, I think that's, again, the right way to go. I think the other big piece of it, though, is how we're going to be taking a look at the mental health of our, our students and our staff members, and making sure that we have resources available to support all students, especially if there are ones who are, who are having some issues as far as, let's say, getting along with others or mental health is concerned. So, I think that other piece of it is certainly going to be helpful. And I think as we move forward with that plan, with incorporating the mental health of the students and staff members, in addition to having adequate law enforcement coverage, I think we're really headed in the right direction there. So, again, I can't think of anything additional that I would do at this point, because, again, I just know that the law, the way it's laid out now, is just very, very comprehensive.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Howard?
Well, again, going back to my original premise, I think when we start talking about safety in the schools, we have to ask, what's the relationship to our mission to educate kids? And truly, our children cannot be expected to focus and to thrive and to learn in an environment they don't feel safe in. Nor should any of the school employees, the teachers, or anybody else be in an environment they don't feel safe in. So, school safety has to be first and foremost. I'm very proud that even before the state took legislative action, our Board of Commissioners, in partnership with the Superintendent of Schools, and with the then-Superintendent Schools, and the Sheriff's Office, met and funded an original iteration of that program, even before it became state mandated. We also very quickly in the budget made sure that there was funding out there for the sheriff's portion of what needed to come in the subsequent years. So, working with the state, we work very closely with them. We need to make sure that we're on board with the things that they're doing. One of the challenges that we always have is really two things. One is, the next attack, whatever form that may take, will likely not look like whatever the last attack was. So, a lot of times, a lot of preparation's based on what's happened, and it really needs to be forward-looking to anticipate things that could happen. Secondly, we need to also make sure that, even though there are state initiatives and state efforts, that the people that know our community best, the areas of threats the biggest, are our law enforcement. And we don't want elected officials, regardless of what role they're in, to take the place of law enforcement. So, we have to continue to have a dialogue with the experts in the field that are continually being updated. One of the biggest threats in our school is still the fact that we have drugs in our school. One of the things I'm very proud of, a couple of years ago, the Commissioners instituted what we called Not in Carroll. I would ask, as soon as I become a Board of Ed member, for us to go to the Commissioners and ask for a Not in Carroll Schools program, to get dedicated funding to get the drugs out of the schools. And if we do those things, then we start to create a much safer environment, and we integrate not only drug treatment, but with drug education and the mental health resources to head these problems off before we're dealing with tragedy.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kyler?
Security and school safety have to be high priorities. I think it's, it was great that our sheriff, our Commissioners, and our Superintendent and School Board stepped up and developed a school resource plan even ahead of the state, and then the state also followed up with it. I think we learned at yesterday's School Board meeting, there's there are some positions needed in the school system for this that aren't funded by this, and we need to look at that. One of the things I've asked candidates, current office holders, on a state level and even on a national level, I think it's great that we're passionate about school safety, and we want to protect our students, and we want to have armed people at the schools, and that's super. What I think we need to do, why can't we fund an equal amount that we're putting into that to get our crisis counselors back in the schools where they belong and get behavior specialists dealing with elementary schools, both the kids and the parents, and work hard on working with... One of the things I've learned too through this process, and I've dealt with wrestlers through the years, and one of the things, in sports and in wrestling, maybe things are a little more aggressive, and I don't remember an elementary kid using the F-word to me, and I'm not sure, I know he wouldn't have done it twice. That happens a lot in our schools. We need to get people down there working on that. And while they're doing that, hopefully they can also focus on the drugs. I was fortunate enough to do a project down the state prison downtown Baltimore, and it was depressing walking in. As I'm going through all the different gates and protections, the guy said, "Where are you from?" I said, "Carroll County." He said, "Oh, the heroin capital of Maryland. You know, you're lucky." And that's how they look at us. We need to fix that.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Kowalski?
Yes, thank you for the question. Another good one, a good, very important question. School safety. So in addition to the SROs, Safety Resource Officers, what ideas do I have that might enhance safety in our schools? And I think we need to, we need to look at bullying. We need to look at the drug issue, as other, you know, individuals have brought up. Very good, very good idea that we need to be doing. You know, what's brought on the whole SRI, SRO legislation was, you know, the violence that we saw in Florida and other places in the past year or so. And one of the main components there that we have to ask is, is what's going on with these young people that would spur them to act out in violence? And as we've heard throughout the years, sometimes they report, in some cases, that they have been bullied, bullied at school, and no one has done anything to address that. So I think that that is something that I would really like to put on the front burner. I have a little bit of experience with this issue with my daughter. My daughter was a recent graduate of Carroll County Public Schools, and she came home and told me about a problem, you know, she was having, and to the point where she was afraid. She was more or less kind of feeling very intimidated. And I said, "Well, we're going to fix this problem. We're going to go in and speak to the administration." And we did that, and nothing was done. And what we came to find out was, you have to fill out a particular form, and if you don't fill out that form, you don't set any process in motion. Well, I was disturbed about that because I was never told. So we need to make it more accessible for parents and students to come forward, and we need to not let bullying slip through the cracks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lord?
Can you repeat the question, please?
I hope I can. Essentially, it was, beyond the SRO program, what other ideas do you have to improve school safety?
So I will, you know, I completely agree with Commissioner Howard on this, that they took the initiative to set up an SRO program, you know, as a partnership between the Sheriff's Department and the Commissioners to fund this before the state took hold. And we really appreciate that. You know, we were the last county in the state to have SROs. We had a police presence, but not a fully-trained SRO officer. I sit on the Security Advisory Council for our school system, and there are many things that we do that I really even can't mention. You know, initiatives that we put in our schools, audits that we do, and a result of those independent audits, we make changes. But if I mention them, what they are, it jeopardizes our security. The component on mental health is something that is in the Safe to Learn Act that was implemented afterwards, and we are, we're looking to fill those positions. But unfortunately, they are unfunded from the state, so we're applying for grants. Eventually, we will get there. We have many of our own staff that sit on committees throughout the state as this plan is being developed. We don't even know exactly what the final version will be, but it is coming along. We get regular updates. So we enjoy a great partnership in this county with our Sheriff's Department, with our State's Attorney's Office and everything, and they have done wonderful things in our schools to address the drug issue. But these things need to be completely changed. And I will tell you, talking to board members around the state, we are the envy of the state because they do not have these partnerships that we do, as well as our Health Department is also one of our partners. So that being said, thank you.
Okay. All right. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Howard, and I want to make sure I get this one submitted from our audience. If elected, will you take a collaborative approach with fellow board members, or will you act as an individual?
This wasn't just for me, was it? No, just kidding.
I don't think so.
Okay.
But maybe.
Yeah. I guess really honestly, the answer's both. I mean, I have found that my ability to be effective as a county commissioner is required being able to do two things. One is to be able to take on challenges, represent the citizens that bring issues to me, and to create policies, create new ideas, and really initiatives that didn't exist before. And so I'm very proud of some of the things that we've done, like our Veterans Shuttle and our Celebrating America effort, and things that really took on a life of their own once an idea was brought to a broader group of people. I think over that period of time, I've also shown an effectiveness in being able to take ideas and initiatives and certainly operate independently and work within a board of five very effectively. I'm very proud of having been the president of the first Board of Five Commissioners. When we first got there, we didn't really know how we were going to function as five commissioners representing districts. We had to work out all those ground rules. And almost every success that I take the most pride in has been a partnership, whether it's with the library system and the small business community, or with the Board of Ed and the Sheriff's Department. And so I think at the end of the day, I'm totally uncomfortable with what I see on the Board of Ed now, which is, any voice of dissent seems like it's a voice of disloyalty. You're not supposed to contrast and debate and those kinds of things. And I know what we do at the Commissioner's Office looks messy, but you get to see how we do what we do. So I would hope that we would have more debate, more discussion, more individual opinions and ideas. But at the end of the day, it takes three to do anything, it takes five to be effective, and I think that there's really a very strong history and a very strong value that Carroll Countyans hold, which is to work together, work collaboratively, and get things done. But I think if you can't do both, you really can't do either.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kyler?
Yes, I've been fortunate enough on different work groups and a lot of community groups to be on many number of boards, serve as president or serve as a board member. One of the things I think makes you a valuable board member, you need to state what you feel, you need to discuss, you need to bring up fresh ideas, you need to debate. But I think, as importantly, we've lost the concept, on a national level, on a local level, that we used to say we could agree to disagree. I think a board of five people ought to be able to sit in a room and fight and yell and scream, and if something passes four to one when they leave the room, and the newspaper asks you what went on, you said, "We decided we're moving forward with whatever," and it should sound the same from the one dissenting vote or the four that did it, and you move on to the next item. So yes, you very much need to voice your opinion, you need to be an individual, and you need to talk it. But once you've committed to be part of a board or a group, you also need to recognize, and hopefully, most of the time, it is five-nothing. But if it's three to two, whether you were one of the three or one of the two, your board just made a decision, and you need to make it work. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Kowalski?
Yes, thank you for the question. And I think I can kind of echo what some of the other candidates have said as well, which is that I think you really need, you really need both. You need to be an individual, you need to have confidence in your ideas, your beliefs, your opinions. You need to have confidence when you've done the research and you've found the data, and you can bring it forward in that meeting and say, with respect, with, you know, with good manners, and say, "I'd like to present some data to back up my ideas, to back up my opinions." And so you have to have that confidence in yourself, and you have to be willing to be an individual. And sometimes that might mean a four to one vote, and that's okay. That's okay. At the same time, it's critical to know how to work in a collaborative manner. I've done that as co-chair of Carroll Joint Neighborhood Association, and we accomplished a great deal to improve communication with the community and with the local government. I've collaborated as a member of the Family and School Partnership Committee. I think we accomplished a great deal in being able to bring our ideas to the table and reach out to the community and improve parent participation. And so you sit around the table, and you, when you agree, you state that, and when you don't, you don't, but you reach common sense collaborative decisions. And so I'd have to say, say both. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lord?
So I have to agree with everybody else, and I'm just going to echo that. But yes, you have to be an individual, but the power lies within a group. We are an entity. An individual board member has no power. Our only power is when we vote. And we vote and make a final decision. And I've learned this, being on the board. I've learned this from being on many committees throughout the years. We have to work collaboratively on a lot of things and bring unique ideas. You know, it happens as we work with our Commissioners. You know, we try to work together, and there, we have a lot of successes. It works when we go to Annapolis, you know, as we have our discussion with our own delegation, as well as delegates and senators down there, and that when we testify, there has to be compromise. It works when we go, as I said, on the Board of Directors for MAB, which is the Maryland Association of the Boards, Boards of Education. You know, you have to be willing to bring these fresh ideas, be an individual, but when that vote comes down, you have to work as a group. So it is a little of both. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Dorsey?
If elected, I certainly would favor the collaborative approach. After all, it's a board of education. It's just not one individual person, but it behooves the members to work together in a collaborative fashion. I think we're bringing up the part about individualization when we think about, we still need to come in with what we have to contribute. We have to certainly share our perspective, and sometimes an individual perspective might be different from the perspectives of others. But still, you have to bring that to the table. And a lot of times, I have found that, once you're really able to look at the alternative kind of perspectives or the different perspectives, and once you sort of analyze those, as a group, I think you can come up with what's best for the organization. So when I think about my work career and even some of my other kinds of activities that I'm involved in, I find that it's always best if a team works collaboratively. And I agree that if the vote comes out for against one, if you're that one dissenting person, you still need to go along with the group. You need to collaborate and certainly make sure that you're bringing your perspective to the table. But at the end of the day, again, it's a board of education. It's five members working together. So I would favor certainly the collaborative approach.
Okay. Thank you. Well, they say time flies when you're having fun, and we're almost at an hour and a half, so I'm going to do one more question for everyone, and then we'll do closing statements. So Mr. Kyler, we'll start with you on this one. And the question has to do with the school system's Bring Your Own Device policy, specifically at the elementary school level. I believe at the School Board meeting last night, there was some discussion about this, and just want to get each of the candidates' perspectives on where they stand with Bring Your Own Device, particularly as it pertains to younger kids at the elementary school level.
Yeah, it's interesting. I jotted down that note in case it wasn't a question to try to make sure I said something about it in closing. I'm no expert on the topic. But cyberbullying is a real issue, and I don't like the idea of elementary school kids having their own device at school. I've used, going to Board of Ed meetings, going to Risk Committee, I've used the county's network to get online while I'm sitting in there, and it does block a few things. And most kids are way smarter than I am. So I just turn off the network and use cell, and then I can do whatever I want. I don't like that. I don't, I'm old, but our kids at elementary age, well, our oldest at college age didn't have a cellphone, but our grandkids, my vote so far has been, "I don't know that you need a cellphone." It's so many of these helicopter parents that they've got to be, get ahold of Little Lucy at 1:30 if they have to. Well, Little Lucy and them both need to learn some independence. I just don't see the need for that device to be there, and I think it's way too many negatives that outweigh the positives of having it there.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Kowalski?
Thank you. I wasn't expecting this question, but it's been something that's been on my mind over the years. Well, I think it was implemented, I don't, I'm not sure, but it's been maybe three, three or four years ago that this new policy came in where elementary students and, you know, starting in third grade, I believe, were able to bring their own device. At the elementary school level, I tend to think they need to be socializing more because when I was working in the elementary school, you had students at recess time that were, they were allowed to look at their phone. And you had some students that would play board games, say if it was raining outside, and they'd be playing board games and such, or talking to each other. But then you had another group, maybe 50% of the class, that were just kind of sitting and staring at their phones. And I'm one of those that thinks that at that young age, elementary age, it's really important for them to be learning social skills at recess. Another part of it is, so I'd like to, at recess, I'd like to restrict that and say no. Another point is that during instruction time, I think it was originally intended to be used at instruction time in the classroom as well, and speaking to teachers, what they found was that they weren't able to efficiently incorporate it into the lesson because you had a lot of students that didn't have a device. So, you know, you have to, you have to present a uniform lesson to the class, and it just wasn't working as a practical matter in the elementary level for lessons either. At the same time, I don't want to say, take an all yes or all no approach because we're living in a technological age, and I like to text, I like to do those things. So I think maybe at dismissal time, just to, you know, make sure the communication is there with parents and such, I tend to think that that's okay. But it's a complicated issue, and I'm interested in hearing everyone's ideas. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lord?
Again, a very, very good question. So the board implemented this policy three years ago, and it was the board's concern at the elementary level whether these would be used properly. Now, our policy does lack a lot of the component of, especially in the elementary level, of a student being able to use a device in learning. But there is parents' demand to send these devices with their children to schools. And as what was discussed in our board meeting last night, is our survey results, I really want to hear from parents. Do we need to make changes within that? Do we need to, you know, not allow students to have them within the classroom, but keep them in the locker? You know, I represent the community. It isn't just my opinion on this. I want to hear from these parents. Because in my opinion, my son did not take his device to school. My daughter did not take her device to school until she showed me educational value to it. To this day, my son still does not take his device, and he is now in middle school. But with that being said, I have asked... But with that being said, I have asked for more feedback, the board has asked more feedback from the parents of how we should handle this at an elementary level. Do we send them, allow them to bring it to school but keep them in their locker? You know, we do live in a technology age. You know, we, everybody seems to have a device. But do we need to be in constant contact with everybody? And that's, that's going to be a good question. We're going to hear from the parents and make those final decisions. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Dorsey.
From the meeting last night, I agree that, again, the next step is that the board really wants to get some input from the parents because there has, has been a survey that had been shared with the teachers and also with the administrators. And I found it to be quite interesting that the teachers were not incorporating the Bring Your Own Device policies into their instruction. So having a device did not lend itself to the instructional program in most cases that were shared by the teachers who had completed the survey. So because the device was not, or had, the device has not been incorporated into instruction, another big piece of the survey results that came out was that the devices themselves have not really created discipline problems for administrators or teachers. You might occasionally have to tell students to put their phones away or whatever, but it, again, had not risen to the point where the devices were looked at as discipline issues. So with those two things in mind, I even question, again, if they're not being incorporated into the instructional program, and on the other hand, if it's not leading into a discipline issue. I guess, again, with hearing from the parents, I would think the next step would be whether they would feel more comfortable just knowing that if, if their student needed to get in touch with them for one reason or the other, they could do that. But I would think that there would have to be some guidelines on that as well, because again, we just can't have our kids at any time of the day pulling out a device to contact home. I mean, that used to be what the office was for. If the child needed contact with the parent, they would come to the office. And now in the cases of classrooms, we have phones in the rooms, and the teachers could make those contacts. So again, the next step is the parental input, but again, these devices are not a part of the instructional program at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Howard.
I would end the policy. I think the teachers have spoken on it, they're not using the devices in the classroom. And the fact is, when you look at it, again, I go back to the same question, does it help or hurt what's going on in the classroom? Now, if there's an outcry from the teachers that say, "No, we use these devices and otherwise we'd be shorthanded," that's a different story. Other than that, if there's not a reason to have them in the classroom, they need to not be in the classroom. Now, if there's a policy where kids can have, you know, phones or whatever, they're turned off, they're not used at all, other than in a case of an emergency, certainly hearing from the public, I think is fine to do. But at the end of the day, the mission of the Board of Education is what goes on in the classroom. Does it help or does it hurt? Does it make the teacher's job easier or more difficult? They should be the only arbiters of whether or not we should use that policy, and based on that, it should be one policy. It shouldn't be necessarily, you know, this school's going to do A and this school's going to do B, or these teachers are going to, it should be one policy that's established. This is really an opportunity where I do believe there's some benefit in having an association that can garner input from the teachers, have that discussion, and speak with one voice to say, "Is it helping us or making it harder for us to be effective teachers in the classroom?" Keep, and my, my oldest daughter's an elementary school teacher, and I know one of the biggest challenges in teaching is just all the other things that go on in the classroom that allow you to either teach or get in the way of teaching. So at the end of the day, from everything I've heard so far, unless there was some compelling information, otherwise, I'd end the practice and I'd err on the side of really encouraging folks to really get a little bit better at talking, not text, and to really think through things. And, you know, as much as I like Google, I like kids that really are working analytically as often as possible.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So at this point, we'll do the two-minute closing statement for each candidate, and I think the last round, we started with Mr. Kyler, so Ms. Kowalski, we'll start with you for the closing statements.
Thank you. Well, I just want to thank you, Mr. Carter, for hosting this forum. I'd like to thank the, my fellow candidates for sharing their ideas, really interesting, thought-provoking ideas, and I really appreciate that. I'd like to thank the viewers who are watching this, you know, in other ways, via television and such. And I'd also like to thank everyone that's supported me over the years, because I've run for Board of Ed before, and, and I just want to really give a kudos out to, to all those individuals that have, that have said, "Mary, keep going, keep going, we like your ideas, don't stop. We really want your voice out there." So I just want to really give a big thank you to my supporters over the years. So in conclusion, our Board of Ed faces many difficult and challenging issues. I truly believe we do need fresh leadership, or we will continue to see more of the same. We'll see more school system cuts, and we've seen hundreds of cuts. We'll see more good, experienced teachers leaving the system, and I don't want to see that. We'll see more chaos in the school community as, as, you know, for, I think it was an entire year that the schools, communities were in an upheaval, and that's very disruptive to the young students. Will our school be closed or not? We need, we'll see more debt, a lot more debt, and that's what bothers me, I think, the most. You know, we need to focus on school repairs, get these repairs done to East Middle School and to the other schools. And because if we keep going down this, this road of build, build, and then close, like we closed New Windsor Middle after only 20 years, and then build, build, we're going to keep, they say, "When you're in a hole, stop digging." So I want to bring some common sense, and I thank you again. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lord.
Thank you. I'd like to thank again the Community Media Center and Carroll County Times for hosting, as well as all the candidates, and you have some great ideas. So in the remaining of my term, I have four goals. They're working collaboratively with our new superintendent and board, and I will have to say our new superintendent is phenomenal, he hasn't disappointed us at all. Reviewing and implementing the conclusions made by our redistricting and school closure committee, planning the modernization of the Career and Technology Center, and the implementation of the Board of Education's strategic plan. This plan will be the foundation and framework that will lead to increased learning for all students, and will be a CCPS guide for many years to come. I'm very proud the role of the board and community played in developing our strategic plan and guiding values. If reelected, I will continue to focus on compensating our hard-working employees, attracting and recruiting minority educators, increasing learning for all students with the use of research and data to close the achievement gap. I will continue to remain good steward of our taxpayer dollars provided by the county and the state. I will continue to focus on getting a good return on the money we spend as our projects move forward, and I ask for your continued support to keep our school system strong for all our current and future students. Thank you for this opportunity this evening.
Dr. Dorsey.
Thanks again to the Community Media Center and Carroll County Times for sponsoring tonight's forum as a public service to the residents of our county. Thanks to our moderator, our timekeeper, audience, and my fellow candidates. The questions and issues raised throughout this evening confirm that there are a number of challenges facing our system. It is important that our community elect individuals to the Board of Education who not only celebrate and appreciate the strengths of our school system, but who are committed to finding solutions to the challenges. We need persons who are prepared with the experiences and expertise to move our system forward. I am such a candidate. Having been a part of Carroll County Schools, I have firsthand knowledge about how hard our employees work on behalf of the students. As an aspiring CCPS Board of Education member, my priorities again are enhancing safe, secure, non-threatening environments that are conducive to learning, acquiring competitive salaries for staff, supporting educational programs that meet the needs of all students, and recruiting and retaining quality teachers and staff to enhance a diverse workforce. I will establish a positive working relationship with all members of our Carroll County community. I will be an active, reflective listener as I communicate with everyone. Working together, we can continue to build a future and meet the needs of students. So for the Board of Education, I would appreciate your vote for Patricia Ann Dorsey, prepared, experienced, and dedicated to the students, staffs, and communities of Carroll County. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Howard.
Well, I want to thank the Community Media Center, the Carroll County Times, my fellow candidates for the opportunity to be here tonight and speak. It's an honor to be just a part of this group. When I started this endeavor, one of my concerns was I did not think we had enough active candidates and qualified candidates for the Board of Education, and I know we have some great challenges. I also know how important the success of our school system is to our community and to the future for our kids and for our grandkids. At the end of the day, there are two choices. One is, who will you put on the Board of Education? But a more fundamental choice is, what will be the direction of the Board of Education? I gave you some reasons earlier on why I might not be your choice, and the fact is, if you're comfortable with the approach that we're taking, the direction that we're on, then I think I'm probably not the best candidate. You have some really good choices up here. If we want to continue to be driven by standardized tests, the state program, the unions' choices, fantasy budgets, things that really don't make sense, and having everything as a priority, I would probably just frustrate you, and in turn, I'd probably be pretty frustrated. But the fact is, if you want to set some clear priorities, recognize that the mission of education is to improve the quality of what goes on between the teacher and the student, to make that the priority in terms of funding, in terms of our effort, to support that effort with a system that works and drives to make sure that we have drug-free schools, realistic budgets, and the kind of Board of Education that works openly in the public, debates in front of people, not behind closed doors, that's responsive to parents, that is truly the community representative, and takes on the mission of educating our children and not straying from that mission, then I believe I've proven as county commissioner for eight years that I can be effective, I can get the job done, I can get money for education, and also, I can deliver. So I would ask for your vote on November 6th, and it would be a great honor to serve the citizens of Carroll County in that role.
Okay. And finally, Mr. Kyler.
Again, I want to thank the Carroll County Times, the Media Center, our moderator, the audience, the people watching, and the other candidates setting up here. It is a good group of candidates, and I'm honored to be part of the group. As I've done with a couple closings, I'm probably going to ramble a little, but number one, I would like to comment our current board on the process they went through in hiring our new superintendent. That's one of the many, many reasons why I'd love to get on this board. I think he's going to be great to work with. They did a good job getting him there. One of the things I forgot I wanted to mention on Bring Your Own Device, one of my concerns about that is just like clothing and whatever, we do have, we might not have the right diversity of, of students, but we do have diverse students, and there's many that can't afford those devices, and is it really fair to them? And is that another situation where just bullying pops up? One of the other things we didn't talk about much tonight was Career and Tech. That is one of the things we need to spend some money on. It's been neglected too long, but we also need to look at how it works, how the students get selected for it. I was blessed with a lovely wife and three kids. She worked in the school system for 25 years, her three kids all ended up with graduate degrees. But we also had many other family members, and the wrestling group, I don't know how many thousands of kids were our extended family. A lot of them went through the Career and Tech. Some of them, I've talked to parents out there now that their kids couldn't get in Career and Tech, and so they're in a private school someplace because they didn't think our school system was serving their child. We need to look hard at that. One of the biggest compliments I just got from one of my ex-wrestlers, he said, "You're a problem solver. We always called you and we had," and he's 45 now, he said, "We still call you and we have something we think we can't solve because you find a way to do it for us." So I'm hoping I can get on the board and I can do that for all of Carroll County.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, I'll turn things back over to Mr. Charles Harrison.
Thank you, Wayne. On behalf of the Community Media Center, I would like to thank all of the candidates who joined us this evening, and special thanks to our moderator, Mr. Wayne Carter from the Carroll County Times. We'd also like to thank our live audience and everyone who submitted questions tonight. Coverage of the Board of Education Candidates Forum will be rebroadcast on Cable Channel 19 and 23, starting Monday, September 17, and will be available for on-demand viewing on the Carroll Media Center website. For specific dates, air times, please visit our website, carrollmediacenter.org. And before we leave you this, tonight, we would like to encourage all eligible residents to get out and vote on November the 6th. You know, voting isn't just a right, it's our responsibility, and every vote counts. So please, take the time to learn about these candidates and all candidates that's running in the 2018 general election, and be sure to cast your vote on November 6th. Thank you and good night.